All right, I'd like to open up the April tenth Foster Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, France, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I share with you Catherine?
Yes.
So we have nobody signed up under public comment. I would like to request a moment of silence. Three, they say things happen in threes and unfortunately, this week, we have three people who are related to Foster that have passed. Steve Pluff's dad, Henry Pluff, passed on Monday. Earl Hopkins, a longtime resident of the town of Foster, passed yesterday. And John Quinn, who served on the council many years ago and was a longtime resident of Foster till moving to Georgia two years ago. All of these men were US veterans and I would like to request a moment of silence for each of them. Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Make the motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Old Business Eco Depot, we got denied. So I am, I'm trying something different. So we get denied. He called me, left me a message. Around Resource Recovery, David. And so I have to find another location that may be suitable for them. They have some pretty strict rules and where they can have it. So I'm going to try to explain to them it's not the size of community of Warwick or Providence. And I think that's why they have a general, the main thing here was the non-paved area of the fairgrounds. So I got to discuss that with him, why it needs to be paved if that can be just a staging area for the vehicles. I mean, I don't see a problem with that, but maybe he's got a different reasoning behind that. And I'm waiting for a callback from him. But I just got the denial two days ago. So. But I'm not, I'm not, that's, I'm not taking that denial. I'll move forward. DOT rumble strips on 101. So they're looking to put the rumble strip on 101, just like they did on Route six. Obviously for safety, you know, I do agree that they do work. The problem is they're very loud and I have a lot of people calling me already. Because that's why I brought up in the last meeting, saying, don't, don't allow them to put them in. And I, you know, I understand, but there is, they do work, they do work. We can't use the past, the recent past fatalities we had there because there were different instances that caused those. It wasn't sleep. You know, we had, there was no other situations that caused that, but it, I agree they do work, but they are very loud and Route 101, I believe, has a lot more residential properties closer to 101 than do on Route six. So I think this, this is still going to be up for discussion or maybe some adjustments on possibilities, maybe not doing the white lines, maybe just the yellow lines in the center. The white lines. Yeah, I mean, I, it's the way I teach my kids too. They should be driving closer to the white lines than the yellow line anyways. If you're driving down the close to the white line, it's going to be loud all the way through. And it's not, it's, it's very, very loud.
So Steve, are they looking for our approval for this?
Yes, which is a good thing.
It is.
Last time they didn't do.
And they can do whatever they want.
So they are, and that's why I, you know, I do want to, you know, bring it forward and, you know, because it's, they were good enough to actually ask for our approval.
Yes.
To do it. Yes.
DOT NITSA, which is the National Highway Traffic Safety Alliance, gathers data for all of the accidents and the fatalities. And I think maybe you guys remember that I tried to have a traffic light installed at 94 and 101. They did a traffic study and not enough vehicles passed through there to warrant a traffic light. I don't agree with it. But I guess there's a certain criteria that you have to meet. And I, I agree with all of you that I, I think this is like one of the very first times that DOT has really reached out to a town saying, do you mind if we talk about it, which is cool. But we are very involved. Officer Boobin is extremely involved in the NITSA program, which is drunk driving, driving distracted. So I think in the future, anybody, anything that goes up on a state road that involves safety will be brought to our attention. So that is, it's a very good thing. Steve Prestawa actually called me first before this even came up. Have, have we reached out to him to have him come?
Not, not to come, but I have discussed with him.
You have spoken to him? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, Lynn Rider Burgess Road, I just want to say my husband rides bicycles and a lot of people ride them on 101. And if you have those rumble strips on the white line, if they hit one of those rumble strips coming down Parade Hill, it's goodbye. They're hopefully smart enough not to ride on Route six, but I know a lot of them do. They used to have them, oh, and they put them in Snake Hill. Well, it was Sheldon, not Sheldon. Past the high school and going up and then Snake Hill, they had them on the sides and people went berserk and they took them out. And they had them on Mount Higia and they took them out.
I actually think they, if, if I'm I'm correct, I believe they took them out of Route six also. They had the, they got the center lane, but they got rid of the.
Wasn't, wasn't that when they redid the road?
When they redid, well, they put it on and then they took them out based on complaints. Yeah, because we don't have bike lanes. So it's, yeah. So that's going to be, we're going to keep that on the old business and we're going to discuss more. There's no action on that one right now. Police station building update. We haven't had a meeting with the committee. We have one scheduled for next week. But we do have some updates here on the deliverables. Let me see, design development documents. And the zoning and planning civil set has been completed. They were added, we got all the, they met and documented, it's a Dropbox or something. Okay, so that, that's going to be brought to the committee. So they have the design development documents and zoning and planning civil set. That'll go to the committee. Committee will vote on it and bring it to the town council. The design development budget, waiting for approval from the building committee also. Then it'll come to the town council. What else we have here? Construction drawings are completed. And final budget pricing is. I don't know if that was completed. Well, that's not, that's actually, that's not due. That's not due. That's not due. Yeah. So permit said, right. So all the, all the deliverables are completed, but they're at the town, at the committee level. And once the committee has the meeting, they will approve them to be brought to the town council and then we'll vote on them.
I looked up the meetings on the website and there was one listed, is it Monday or, but then it was canceled.
Yeah, it's, it moved, I don't think it's reposted yet. It's going to be, there's. Yeah, I don't know if it was up on the website. I don't know if it's reposted yet.
I don't think it's reposted.
So did you repost that one yet? Oh, no. The, the building committee for the, it's on there.
Okay, I looked this afternoon.
It's going to be Thursday.
Thursday at 5:30? Okay.
It's the 17th.
Yeah, 17th. Yep. So because we haven't had a meeting, I don't have any other building update, but we'll have it for the next meeting. All right. New business, we have a resolution regarding the restoration of general revenue sharing to cities and towns.
Do you want me to read that, Steve?
Yes, please.
Okay, Town of Foster, State of Rhode Island, Resolution 2025-02. Resolution of the Town of Foster regarding the restoration of general revenue sharing to cities and towns. Whereas cities and towns across Rhode Island have been struggling with the recent inflationary environment. And whereas in 2009, the General Assembly discontinued revenue sharing due to the econo, excuse me, economic collapse. And whereas the removal of the general revenue sharing forced the cities and towns to increase property taxes to make up for this loss in revenue. And whereas the state of Rhode Island has seen a very good rebound from the economic crisis brought on by the COVID pandemic. And whereas in the past three fiscal years, the state of Rhode Island has benefited from the economic rebound with 417 and 878 million respectively, and a $410 million surplus for fiscal year 2023 and estimate 98 million for fiscal year 24. And whereas the car tax phase out payments benefited our citizens in the short term, they did not provide cities and towns with an escalator to make up for lost revenue and inflation. Now therefore, be it resolved, be it hereby, what is this? Now therefore be it, okay, we got an extra word in there. Be it resolved that the Foster Town Council respectfully requests the Rhode Island General Assembly and Governor to reinstate general, general revenue sharing for all 39 cities and towns to help reduce the impact of inflation of the citizens of Rhode Island and be it further resolved that the Foster Town Council respectfully requests the respective city and town councils of Rhode Island join in our request to have the General Assembly restore general revenue in the upcoming fiscal year 2025 budget adopted April 10th, 2025.
So we have a resolution. We, we need a motion to adopt that resolution.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution and have the President Stephen Pluff and Sue Dillon sign.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? On the resolution, the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, resolution passes. All right. Number two, new business. Approval of town clerk, appointment of deputy town clerk, actually.
Steve, I'll make a motion to authorize the town clerk to to advertise the, the position of deputy town clerk in whatever media that that she sees fit. We've done it. I know we've done indeed before, maybe the Observer, whatever. I, I just want to make a motion that Sue is authorized to do that.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. All right, new business, Foster Old Home Days Committee request for beer tent.
So Steve, I, we didn't have any, anything in sugar scent.
That's was on there. I thought you put it on. No. So I don't have anything that I can.
So they haven't done an application?
Here's the thing, we don't handle anything to do with Foster Old Home Days at all. So if they want a 10, if they, we don't do anything with their food trucks. We don't do anything with anything, their grandfathered in that they take, they take care of everything.
And so the, they had sent us a request and the individual or the company running the beer tent does have a state liquor license. And I think we ran into this before that under the state statute, as long as they have a state license that is valid, they can operate here. So just before the Old Home Days, if they can file a copy with the town hall, that's it. It's Trinity Brew House.
They had done it. Oh, and they're, they're at the food truck events anyway. Yeah. So we don't need to take any action on this as long as they.
Yeah, I don't think, we don't need to take any action.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to allow the, well, they say beer tent. I don't know. Do I need to specify Trinity Brew House?
No.
Just a beer tent at Old Home Days.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good.
Thank you.
Fiscal year 2526 budget adoption.
Want me to go, Steve? Say something?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to go.
So after our last budget workshop, that was weeks ago, like five minutes ago, we finalized the budget as I presented to you here. So what you need to do at this point, for anybody who's been coming, the only few, we changed a few things. We increased our refuse removal, we increased animal control a little bit and we increased South Foster Fire Company by $5,000. We discussed a few other items. So this budget from the public hearing has changed about $15,500. That's about it. So the total budget that you should make a motion to accept would be the $18,214,541, which is on page 17. I believe. Because you want to include the capital. So in our budget, we exclude the capital to figure out the portion that's affected by this levy. But the 18 is the budget because you're approving the capital and also in that motion, include the land trust for, they presented a budget for capital. And I believe that's the one they're requesting, right, for $230,000 release or whatever you decide based on what's in front of you.
So you're looking for, is it?
Motion for the two amounts.
Yep.
For the general fund.
Separate, separate motions or?
No, same, one, one motion, one motion.
You want it one motion?
It's really, you're voting on what's moving forward at the financial town. And the two, the two, not departments, but the two operating budgets, the two, the capital budget for the land trust. Or do we, and I, do we have to do so? I, I'm just suggesting the capital because their operating budget is already in the general fund.
It's already.
That's already built in.
It's in that, yes. Okay. So I would, I would recommend that you approve the budget for the $18,214,541 and the, the land trust but capital budget that you would like to see for, move forward at the financial town meeting. Just for a discussion. This is, this budget is presented right now with an increase in the tax levy because that's what everybody is interested in as well. 3.38%, which is on page 18.
Which is great.
It's less than 4% increase, go down a little bit, down, like up. Yes, right there. So a 3.38% increase in tax collections is what it's, all right. And that's not necessarily going to be reflected in the rate. Because you might have attrition, you might have increases in property values. Let's hope you do, because I know that there's building and permitting going on and that changes the values of property as well. All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $18,214,541 minus the, okay.
The general fund.
I.
For the general fund and.
And then a separate, okay. Oh, right. Okay. For, for the general fund and, oh my goodness, this is, this the, I have to do.
If you wanted to take out the two.
Yeah, I've got them here. So the other one, the operating is already in here, right? Joanna?
Yes.
It's already in here.
The capital relief request of.
Okay. And the land trust capital budget request for.
One ten, right? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. Yes, it was right. Okay. I wanted to subtract the 120, so. Right.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion for, in a second, for $18,214,541 and capital land trust, capital financial, also land trust, capital of 110,000. Any discussion?
You want to clarify where you got the 110 from?
I, I will. I made the motion. So the original request for the capital budget for the land trust included $120,000 for property investments for, so in other words, the acquisition of additional property. And my motion was to remove that. And I have a number of reasons. One of which is. Okay.
Just so that it's clear what you did.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, okay, that's what I did.
Departure and what we've generally done, simply because we've never voted separately on the land trust capital at a financial town meeting. But the charter actually does state that the town council is supposed to adopt or approve their budget and so are the taxpayers at the financial town meeting. I just discovered that.
Yeah.
Five hours ago. And that the proper way to do that is this.
And this is awkward because usually we have one motion.
So it will be, it will be voted on. It will be another vote, just like we vote on each department. It will be another vote at the financial town meeting.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
It's just awkward making a motion like that because we, usually it's one motion. We don't usually have to separate that.
An hour ago, you went out at the mail, you must.
Right. No, it's.
Bid award proposals for refuse recycling contracts.
Oh, boy. This, this is a sad thing, but I have to make the motion for it. We had one bid. And it was Rambone disposal. And.
Five minutes before it was due.
Five minutes before it? Not, not through any fault of their own, but so the three-year contract is in year one, $359,920. In year two, $374,316. Year three, $389,289. And the total over three years is $1,123,525.
Impressive when you say it that way, but it's, it's a $60,000 increase from last year, which we anticipated because I can't think of one thing that hasn't increased exponentially. But we had only originally budgeted 50. Part of the $15,000 change from the financial, from the public hearing on the budget was that 10. And then the other years, if you calculate it, it's just about a 3% increase each of the following two. So the large increase is in year one.
Yep.
Right. But I mean, it's ugly. I mean, we don't have any choice. We have no other bidders. We, there's nothing, we, there's nothing we can do.
DBW's budget that you just adopted, their percentage increased quite a bit as well because now, and when we do the narrative, when we discuss it, we will separate that out in a way to say like, this is what DBW went up. This is what the refuse, that's what caused the large increase in, in their department.
Yeah.
So. Entertain a motion to accept that.
That was my motion.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resignation of the rec committee members, Danielle Scott, Elaine Gugliotti.
I, I'm, if I can pull their letters up, I would read them.
You have them?
Sue has them.
You, do you have them printed out soon? I would read them. I just, my computer's slow.
I have the one for Carol. Hi Carol, I mean, I'm sorry, Danielle. Hi Carol, thank you for reaching out. Unfortunately, I will not be continuing my appointment on rec. This is a very hard decision to make after being involved for so long. I believe it's been 19 years. I'm not able to make the time commitment and feel it is unfair to the rest of the committee to not pull my weight. This has been a struggle for me for the past few years. It is impossible for me just to walk away though. Rec's in my blood and I intend to stay involved as much as possible. Tammy and I have spoken often about this and she knows I'll be there for her. If at all possible, when she needs me. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the rec committee. It's been a pleasure creating and providing recreational activities for the community. Over the years, we've teased out the type of activities and the community wants. I've enjoyed being a part of the process as recreation has evolved. Best regards, Danielle.
I'll make a motion to accept Danielle's resignation with regret.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll read the next one, Steve. This is from Elaine Gugliotti. She says, hi, hoping you had a great Christmas and wishing you a happy new year too. I received a notification from the town about my rec position and if I was to renew to submit an email. However, I've wrestled with this decision, but unfortunately due to family obligations, can't renew with a wholehearted, with wholeheartedly at this time. I'll admit to this town, Carol Shali as well. I'll submit, sorry. So I want to let you know, and although I'm resigning officially, I'd still like to be notified for the wrecking crew. And happy to assist with Facebook and digitally advertising for the group if needed. Can leave my access to the page if you'd like. Also, still happy to help with QR code for the metal tree. Once the town decides what website they want to put on to publicize. Totally up to y'all. Y'all. Tried to say it the way it's supposed to sound. Feel free to let me know. Thank you so much for the wonderful times and opportunity to give back to Foster as well. Hope to see you all soon.
It's y'all.
It's, yeah. Yeah, you, you have that.
Yeah. I make a motion to accept Elaine Gugliotti's resignation.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I have one more thing. I would request a motion to move situat animal control contract out of his executive session, move to new business.
I'll make a motion to move, where are we? What number is that?
Animal hospital, animal control contract, number three.
Number three. Um. Animal control, oh, number three right there. Okay, I'll make a motion to move the situat animal control contract out of executive session and up to this point in the meeting.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right now, that's number eight. All right, now we can discuss situat animal, animal control contract.
So do I keep? Right. If you don't have, I have a hard copy of one sheet, I guess they wanted to.
I'm, I'm going to pull it up in here.
2022.
Well, here's a summary.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Again, no, I don't.
Do you want me to continue to pass it down?
Does everybody want a copy of this?
Does everybody want?
Okay.
I got it to the same.
Oh, here it is. Oh, here it is.
They didn't change much on the contract, as you can see. They added three thousand dollars, um, for each year of the contract, which is, um, what, three, four, four percent maybe, a little bit, uh, probably. So, um, they want fifty three thousand for year one, fifty six thousand for year two, and fifty nine thousand for year three. They're extending the contract for, they're redoing the contract for three years. Obviously, the language will stay the same, except for one addition, they just want to add one, um, one paragraph that you have right there, just in the event that animal control services are requested, do you, do you want me to read it, or you also have the time?
I mean.
That's, I added the. Yeah, actually, we had budgeted for twenty four, twenty five, and I added the five hundred, so that's fifteen thousand five hundred, five hundred.
Which we just adopted.
Yeah, which we just adopted, so you have the money in the budget now.
And there's no, no changing that language, I mean.
I believe they want this.
Yes.
I don't know if there's gonna be much discussion.
It's tough to.
I I know, how you, I, you can't really not accept it.
It's like refuse.
It, it really is.
If you don't want the animal control services in Situate, you could start looking somewhere else, but that's timely, and it's never been our advantage.
No, it hasn't.
Yeah, they provide a pretty good service from what I'm hearing.
They do.
And, um, it's working for them, and it's working.
And we knew it was going up. It's all by five hundred dollars.
Right, so, um, it's working for them, it's working for us, so. If there's nothing wrong with that, three thousand dollars isn't probably a reason.
Yeah, no, no.
They're happy with it, I believe. And I mean, I would say the chief is happy as well, the chief has seen this, and is happy as well.
Catherine, do you have something?
I'm just reading the last paragraph where we will be responsible if they don't get.
Right.
The expenses.
The chief, the chief has the full, uh, all the changes, and she's, she's happy with it.
So I entertain a motion to approve contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the town of Foster and Situate Animal Control. Um, for the period July first, twenty twenty five through July first, twenty twenty seven, as presented.
June thirtieth to twenty twenty eight, it says here.
No.
It goes through July first.
Oh, my years are right here.
Yes, but, but the contract ends June thirtieth of twenty.
Okay, all right, so I'll amend that to approve it, uh, for the period July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. For a three year term, right, okay, those are the last increases.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right.
I'm gonna notify the chief, probably before I sign off tonight, and they'll revise the contract and send it to, um, Steve to, um, signs, and their council president will do the same, and that will, that will be also at the three years.
Yep.
And I'll forward it to the chief when it's done.
My executive session.
Okay, I move to go into executive closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws forty two dash forty two dash four. For the reasons stated in Rhode Island General Laws forty two dash forty six dash five. Uh, for discussions and work sessions regarding collective bargaining, contract negotiations, or litigation. According to Rhode Island General Laws forty two dash forty six dash five A two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? We are now in executive session.